Are we ready? We have a special meeting October 26, 2021 at 5:30 p.m. I just want to get a minute.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here again tonight. We ask that you continue to guide over us, help each and every one of the council members and myself to make the best decisions for the council each and every time we meet and in our daily lives and walk with you, Lord. Continue to guide and keep the community safe and just lead us in your direction in Jesus' name and pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
I have everyone in the public hearing, CDVG-CB.
Good evening. I'm David Fox of Red Fox Enterprises. This is the second public hearing for a 2021 CDVG-CB coronavirus application. It's on October 26, 2021, and it was advertised for 5:30 p.m. I have provided a handout. Everyone, there's some more on the table, but this one will be in the audience. In the blue, the page numbers are in the green in the right corner, right top corner of the handout. Page two. Under the Green Bell and Block Ranch Coronavirus Small Cities Program, the state of Florida has appropriated nearly $42 million in funding for small cities across the state of Florida. The minimum amount you can apply for is $200,000. The maximum amount you can apply for is $5 million. There is no match requirement in this program. You can only submit one application. Page three. The city of Vernon is proposing to submit an application to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunities for funding. The funding will be utilized to renovate the city community center located at 2808 Yellow Jacket Drive. Vernon, Florida, provide a clean, safe, and handicap accessible location for residents to receive testing and vaccinations for COVID-19. The proposed renovation will include improvements to the building to provide necessary handicap accessibility, replacement of the roof, repair or replacement of HVAC or AC and heat, the electrical, replacement of necessary plumbing and fixtures, renovation of the restroom to make any disabilities that comply or handicap accessible, upgrade the kitchen, repair, prep and paint walls, replace ceiling, repair or replace flooring, install fire prevention system for pleasant air next to your doors. The proposed project on page four. The renovated building will provide local access to essential COVID-19 testing, which is required as part of this application. Testing and vaccination service for residents of Vernon, a majority of which have low modern income. Renovation will include improvements to make the facility handicap accessible. Estimated cost, estimated construction cost is $861,421. Estimated administration cost is $50,000. Estimated engineering cost is $76,145 for a total application amount of $987,566. Page five. The steps required of applying for these, for a CDVG-CB grant are as follows. One, you advertise the hold of first public hearing, which was held October 7. Two, you advertise the hold of second public hearing, which is being held tonight, was advertised. Three, if there's any comments tonight that would require changes to the application, applications have been made. Four, the application will be submitted by Monday, November 1, 2021, by 5:00 p.m. electronic. With that, I'll pass it back to the council to implement the public comment.
Does anyone have any public comment?
Can the building still be used for everything else in the community?
Please state your name and address.
Mary Forties. Can the building still be used for other things?
I'm sorry. Your, and your address?
2740 Traverse Drive.
Yeah, it can still be used for other purposes. It's just, one of the purposes of being used, it has to be for COVID relief.
What is that technology in the building?
Like what, what kind of?
Well, in case, if you're having events still for the community, you want to be able to set up some kind of wireless videos.
It won't interfere with anything like that.
No, I'm asking, are you putting any kind of technology in the building? I mean, if it's a renovation in this day, maybe I would think that would be a requirement.
This program is, you've got to associate with what kind of items you're providing that would make it for COVID relief. This funding is specifically for COVID relief projects. You can always add those things later, or, you know, find and look for other funding to do it during the same time as the remodeling. It funded, but nothing in this application, and I'll verify that with engineer, nothing on the warehouse. Ms. Walters, anything you're aware of that would be?
No, sir.
I'm sorry. Last lady here asked a question. Will you state your name and address for the record?
Sandra Potich, 342 Creek Road.
Ellen Morris, 5146 Creek Road. Will this in any way, with the way technology is today, put a hindrance upon being able to get this approved? You know, would they, would that be a stumbling block when they start to look at it not having it?
But not having Wi-Fi installed from Monday?
Well, not necessarily Wi-Fi, just you run cables for electricity.
You normally would do that, you know, include that in with it, just, just a thought.
That's something the engineer may be considering, and I really don't know the answer to that. It won't, it won't cause any penalty on the application itself.
Well, I didn't know if it might be a stumbling block, you know, if they see that that's not included some way.
At this point, it's not designed, it's just the initial trying to get funds.
Okay, just to get it going.
Well, it probably will be designed.
It'll be, if funded, what'll happen is, once you get funded, the town will go to a con, if and when they get funded, go down to contract, and the state will tell us, and they're kind of going through their process now, if, you know, to release for the engineer to start the process of designing the project.
And more than likely, and I can't obviously speak for the engineer, but when they're doing electrical and wiring, more than likely, that is included in there because they know that if it's used as a, even a shelter in place, then you're gonna need.
Exactly.
You know, you're gonna need that communication to let people know what's going on.
If not anything, it'll probably have at least a conduit there you can run.
Yeah.
Okay. And that was my main question.
That's fine. We're here for you.
Al Forties, 2740 Traverse Drive. Couple of questions, and I apologize, I'm gonna bundle them up for you. Does this remain a city-owned facility?
Yeah, it must.
Okay. How far along in the application process are you? Cause your deadline's Monday.
We're close. This is the last step, is having the vote hearing and get some forms out.
You think you're gonna get it in on time?
He always does.
We've made tight timelines before, but I don't wanna say yes and jinx myself. But we're gonna do everything in our power to get it in on time.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything?
I don't wanna get too excited, but I'm getting so excited.
We'll close the public hearing.
Now we'll close the public hearing, open back up the special meeting, and could I have a motion to approve Resolution 22-176, apply for CDVG-CB funds?
I make motion approved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
You as well. Number three. Do I have a motion to upgrade street maintenance because this is from temporary department?
Make a motion to upgrade.
Discussion?
Tell us something. You really, really, really.
Really, really, really.
Want to long-term work for the city?
Yes.
Like five years, you see yourself still working for the city?
I do. I'm a long-term person, and I've worked my life out for 30 years.
Listen, I'm not even trying to be funny, but, and I know you don't wanna stand up and say, "No, really, I just want the insurance," and then I'm quitting. But, I mean, I want you to look me in the eyes and say, "I really do plan on being around."
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
I don't think it's going nowhere.
Motion carried. Congratulations. Welcome home. Thank you very much. No, we thank you. Number four. Do I have a motion to purchase $3,470 for a flow meter for WWTB, the DEP requirement?
I make motion approved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Yes, sir. It's approved.
Motion carried. Number five. Do I have a motion to refund $721.65 to Linda Wilson due to a closed account that was set up incorrectly?
Make motion approved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
How did this happen? I do have something here.
I can honestly tell you that we're not 100% sure if it was the deputy clerk or if it was the person who read the meters that gave the wrong information to the deputy clerk.
But I don't understand how this.
When you, when you.
Why is it just happening? What?
Don't even be looking at me.
Well, here's the thing, though. We've been going back and forth. We've been sending the guys out to check the meter and everything. Nobody went back prior on the system until now?
We did not have a picture of the meter until recently.
But I'm saying, if.
The meter readings are on the paperwork.
Sometimes there are the zeros, sometimes the zeros aren't put on. We're going back, we're checking everything. And when I tell you everything, every single meter has been checked by two people.
And I don't understand why this account.
I can't explain it. All I know is, it was not the current deputy clerk, and it was not just the clerk that did it.
I don't think you're about to say that. I'm just saying one way or another, by now. 2019, it's been a long time.
The count was set up in August of 2019. That's all, that's.
Well, you know what? Y'all should've been checking it.
We don't have, we can't check it unless we see a picture.
You don't ever check their accounts? Come on.
We don't have a picture. We don't know what it's, unless we go to the meter ourselves and look.
Listen to me. When she was going round, when she was going round and round, y'all didn't do anything to check it? When she was coming up here.
We were calling and had them reread the meters, and that's all we can do, ma'am.
Well, listen, well, how did you catch it now?
Because we had a picture of the meter.
Because I saw the picture of the meter.
We had a picture of it.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. First of all, we can be a little bit more respectful and not yell and snort.
I'm sorry.
I'm speaking to everybody and reminding myself as well. On the paperwork, I don't see Jason's here. That's why I don't see any one of y'all, when y'all are reading the meters. I know generally it's written down on the list with the address. The zeros are included on what's on the meter. Is that still the way that it's done?
Sometimes, yes.
Every paperwork that's ever done is that way.
Also, whenever we're keying in the meter reads, we do not see how many zeros are on the account. That's a separate screen.
I understand that, and I also know from experience that those systems are set up in a way that the mileage and the zeros and everything are entered as the way they're supposed to be when it's set up.
Yes, that's correct.
And y'all are led into that.
Which was before either one of us.
No, no, I understand that, but my point is, is that this particular account we've been dealing with for months now, that's been coming in, and we've done everything as far as outside, checking the outside stuff, but just until a picture was brought in the other day, that's how we found out about the rest of it?
Cause she saw the zeros.
So nobody thought to go into the system itself, and there was no alerts on the system?
No, ma'am.
So neither one of y'all thought, "Hey, let me go back and check this?"
Let me go have the guys take a picture? No.
No, no, and I'm not saying let the guys take a picture. The picture is the same as what's written on.
Not always, not always, ma'am. I will say that for sure, not always.
Okay, so till they decided to bring you a picture, you decided to do it, and it's what you tell me?
No.
We didn't have any reason to look there.
But this woman is coming up here complaining. I mean, that should've said on the rest.
It's hard to explain. I'm gonna try to explain it in layman's terms. There's, actually, now I found out today, there's four different kinds of meters out there. One, one meter we have is digital and has no zeros. It's the OCs. There's a digital, one digital one in the whole system. There's one with a 10 multiplier, there's some with 100 multipliers, and there's actually one with a thousand multiplier.
I understand completely.
Okay. When the count, when you say you move, your count is still at that address. So when the system that we have now, all we do is add a name to it, it opens, the count stays open, other than the old one goes to a zero, zero count. Okay? Then it stays, when somebody moves in, it goes, there's a new account comes up with the same information that was the same meter reader, the last meter read, and the same amount of multipliers. It goes, you just add the name, their name, and their personal information. So what happened is Tracy, we had, with the picture that we ended up with of the meter, Tracy happened to have it open while she had that screen open. She had looked at the picture in that particular screen, which is not where we enter the meter reads. The meter reads on a whole different thing.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay? She happened to notice it because she had the picture right there in front of her and the screen at the same time, and she noticed two zeros, one zero.
So, in all that explanation, let me say this. The system that, that was before this one, those stationary zeros when they're put in, and the ones that are manually entered by you or the clerk, whichever.
We don't enter any when we do the meter read.
You don't enter any meter readings at all?
No, not the zeros.
Okay, what I'm telling you is, they're stationary in the system.
Right.
When it's set up.
When it's set up.
And when they bring you in the paperwork, and you've got a number, and you type it in, if it's way off, there's a screen that's supposed to pop up.
It says, it says, um, over two times amount, is all it says.
Considering it was set up in August 2019 and closed, I want to say July of 2020?
And then opened back up again.
And then reopened back up this year? No, we didn't have a reason to go and look and say, "Hey, maybe it was set up incorrectly."
So it's not, all this time, this stuff going on with the meter readings and all that, you've not had any alert pop up when you put in that?
No. Cause it was always high in the old system. See, it was high before. So it didn't catch that it was, and also, the meter reads aren't always right. We had a meter read done Friday that had, we had to send a person back to send pictures because the zeros were wrong with what was in the system, and we had to go, so.
We had to verify.
We had to verify.
I understand the stakes, I really.
Yeah, everybody makes mistakes, but we had no reason to look at the multiplier.
But as you said, now with that said, this has been going on since 2019, y'all saying the previous clerk or deputy clerk. What I'm saying, what the council's saying for them, is y'all learned anything?
Yes, we did.
The thing is, let me tell you, the thing is, we almost locked this lady up. This lady blocked me and my own driveway.
Right.
And the thing is, you're talking about residents of the city of Vernon, and we talked about $700, $800, or $2000. I complained, well, mine's $40, but we know we got a problem. There's no telling how many times we've sent our employees out there. But I don't do the paperwork or read the meters and nothing like that. I'm a councilman. But the thing is, I hope y'all learned a valuable lesson, because this lady stayed on me, stayed on me, stayed on me, almost worse than Larry.
With that.
But I'm just telling y'all.
Right.
Don't blame it on a previous clerk.
I'm not blaming the previous clerk, I'm saying.
Just tell the council y'all learned some valuable lessons.
Yeah, we learned from it.
And also, we're asked why we didn't catch it sooner. We have to blame somebody. It was not our fault.
But from now on.
I'm sorry. But I'm saying, you cannot blame us. It is not our fault. It didn't start with.
She didn't complain when her old account was open. She never complained then, and she was paying the bill.
Listen, y'all been arguing with this lady, and this lady has called.
But this is my, all I wanna say.
Don't get rude to her, all this lady.
Right. It won't have, believe me, we're going through everyone.
She's been in my house. He's actually been in my house.
Okay, I wanna say there's also customers that weren't paying enough, and now they're just fixed to pay more. So they're gonna be mad next month when they get their bill, because they didn't have enough zeros. So just be prepared.
Maybe a picture needs to be taken when there's a problem, and that would've.
Yeah, that way we can compare. From now on, we get pictures with it.
And that's what they've been doing. But how many total, how many total?
What, three? Maybe three that were wrong? Three that were wrong the opposite way, that weren't paying enough?
So how long has Linda's account been holding?
It's 2019.
Two years.
But the, but the one that, when I went in and asked them to figure it out, I only thought it was May because that's when she had started coming up here.
That's when she read, uh, just right now.
So Tracy sent me a message on, one day, a couple.
Thursday?
Thursday, Tuesday, I don't know, and said, "Hey, actually, Linda Wilson's original account was open in August of 2019." I said, "Well, then you need to go back and look all the way to August of 2019 and, and see if there was a discrepancy." And then it turned out the next day or two days later, Ms. Wilson called her and said, "Hey, I wanna go all the way back," because at that point, I didn't even realize it was past May. Or we could've done one check, the, the whole deal, but.
Well, her dad, her dad was living there all this time.
It was only on the new system that it was mess up.
Cause I know he was living at the house. Her dad was living at the house, and there was a trail in the back that was getting water. Debbie, Deborah. So I don't understand how come they wasn't charged. I don't, I mean, I don't get it.
Because that was all on the old system. It was set up differently.
It was when the banyans system was put in, from the old system. Everything transfers on the old system, the person that keyed it in into the new system. And it wasn't me, that's why I wouldn't hear them, that's all I know.
Well, things should've been checked. I think.
All I tell you is, I hope y'all learned a valuable lesson.
We learned a valuable lesson.
We all made mistakes, and I'm glad we fixed it.
We fixed it now.
Finally figured it out.
Yeah.
Cause it was getting worse. It was fixed now.
That's right.
How many accounts are messed up now?
Right now, um, we're gonna have, I think, three that are gonna be the other way.
I'm gonna count any.
Oh, we got one more, yeah, the, the one that's digital. The digital one has.
Okay, wait, the three that you found the other way, they were found just now?
Yes.
Have y'all notified them so that they would be prepared?
Not yet, because we just got the meter reads in today.
Okay, so they need to be notified because they're gonna, what in the world's going on?
Well, is that their fault?
No, it's not their fault, but they need to be prepared to.
That it's gonna be higher in the future.
And it doesn't need to be applied on one bill. Is that right?
It's just, it adds one, so, well, most of them were riding, right at the minimum anyway. So it's probably gonna up it probably to maybe $20, $30, maybe more.
But it's not gonna be retroactive, they're not gonna.
No, they're not gonna have to pay for the past. It's moving forward.
It's just best point, moving forward.
Moving forward.
I'd explain it to them, tell them what's going on, and I'm just.
To prepare.
Speaking for myself, I just prepare, and now I just. I'm like, "Yeah, $500, $300, put them in shell."
I had print out of, the one that's gonna, was the digital that doesn't have any, I printed out a paperwork, we thought we fixed this a couple of months ago, on, it tells, supposed to tell me what the multiplier's supposed to be, and actually, theirs is only gonna be two months because of the fact that it said to change the multiplier, and, because it had no zero. But the system couldn't understand why it had no zero, so it wanted to add one.
And that's the issue, so it's gonna be a bigger mess. I haven't figured that one out.
But we have learned, believe me, I'm fine toothed combing everything on that meter read sheet. I've been sad to death today. I'm fine toothing it. I mean, I've, I've got a meter I can't.
We appreciate you today, buddy.
Every day.
Every day, but I'm just.
I appreciate you watching. We all make mistakes, even they've made mistakes reading the meters. It ain't hard to make mistakes. We all him, but, you know, just learn from your mistakes and, you know, try to get it right. And I'm glad we got this situation.
It's fixed.
Thank goodness. Thank goodness.
So, with that being said, all in favor? opposed? Motion carried. I'm signing with you.
Thank you. Now, I did tell her it would be available either after the meeting or in the morning. And we'll recall her, I know.
Number six. I'm gonna keep this as short and as sweet as I can. We've had a lot going on over the last few months. People in and out, sicknesses, deaths, there are a couple of things that I need to notify council about, that I have already notified the mayor and the city attorney about. And I also, what I have to do is, enemy, which I would much prefer, you know, just me. Like it used to be, when there's an issue with an employee or something, the mayor or president of the council or whoever, be able to speak with them. But we've told time and time again that that is not the way it works when a head of a department is involved, and it has to be spoken about in meetings. So with that being said, I'll just say this because I've been asked about it. Back at the end of July, the city clerk requested three different times on three different occasions that I had somebody else start doing the implementation. The reason I'm bringing that up is because I've been asked, because it looked seemingly as though I was maybe punishing or, normally, because I always ask Tracy to do it, because that's the way it's been done for as far back as I remember. But it was brought to my attention that with things going on in the past, that it looked kinda strange, so I just wanna let everybody know that the reason I started asking someone else is because she actually requested that. The other thing that has been reported to me, and I let the attorney know about it as soon as I found out about it, and we discussed it a little bit. A while back, when I asked at one of our meetings, like I said, we've had a lot going on, you all remember the meeting when I asked that Public Works had their own credit card? I always thought that they had, like the other departments, but y'all remember that? And, and we ended up approving that to them. The reason that I asked that, and the reason I found out that they didn't have it, was because an employee told that there was an incident, well, I say incident, here's what I was told. The marshals had an issue where a trencher was needed. The credit card was asked for, by the clerk, to rent a trencher, because the backhoe was down, and they were gonna have to wait on parts. And the report that I was told was that Tracy said, "No, in fact, her husband and his equipment was available, that they could use him or wait on the parts." And they were denied the credit card. And I reported this to the attorney, and what she said was that that was possibly because of her public position, you know, it would depend on if that person wanted to do an affidavit, which I was told that that person would do an affidavit. So I needed to let you all know about that. Like I said, the attorney's known about it since it was first told to me. But that was why I requested, was because the outside employees were denied the credit card by the city clerk.
What was this?
This was when they had to do the marshal, there was an issue at the marshals, and it ended up being over the weekend, and they needed a trencher, and the backhoe was down. I've got the notes on it at home, I don't have the dates here with me, but it was back on the marshal project, and it was, when it was reported to me, was when I asked and said, "I did not know that they did not have their own card, will y'all please do that?" And that's when I said I was pushing my report back to a later time. In a number of times, we had, the clerk was out, different people were out, so I just needed to, like I said, I reported it to the attorney, like I was supposed to, but I'm also obligated to let the council know when something like that is reported to me. And from what she stated to me, that that could possibly be illegal, given that that's the public position that she holds. Now, the attorney's not here, so I'm just telling, you know, the discussion that we had, basically, I just wanted to report it because it was reported to me. Now they have their own credit card, so they, they don't have those issues, but, and I, I'm not doing this to, I certainly do not want there to be any more issues between outside and inside employees. I'm simply, goodness to council, because I'm obligated to.
You wanna say something?
I was just waiting to see if anybody else had anything to say.
I'm waiting to see what you guys say.
I'm waiting on you?
Jason, you normally run the backhoe, so do you, do you remember this?
I don't remember this whole thing. This wasn't me that reported this.
And Jason was the only one that I dealt with on this issue?
I don't know how it went down.
Can you just tell us what you remember? I, I know that I'm putting you on the spot, but it needs to be.
It wasn't a big deal to me. I mean, if I remember right, I think when the backhoe went down, it was a week.
it was the weekend or something, or it was Friday.
Were, yeah, let's, let's just do it this way, plain and simple, because this is, this is misery on all of us. Were you told to use Danny Walker and his equipment or wait on the parts? And not give him the credit card?
No, it wasn't use his equipment. If I needed his equipment.
He was available.
He was available, yeah. It wasn't like I was forced to, no.
And I would like to go on record and say, that is an absolute lie. I have never denied to give anyone a credit card, ever.
When we.
I'm just giving you the information, so I'm not lying about anything.
I'm not, I have never, ever. I have only dealt with Jason on that issue. And I told him, because we were talking about, because he was talking about renting, he didn't even ask me for the credit card, he just asked about renting.
We wanted to rent the car, but it was over five hundred, so I couldn't get it.
It wasn't a trencher that was like a hundred and fifty or less that you needed?
It wasn't that, it was, it was more, more expensive. But I can't remember, that's been so far back though.
So it was these councils, if it was over five hundred dollars, if any councils approved it, what's the base?
The only thing I remember about, the thing I heard was, is, is, it wasn't that we had to use Danny's, that was never said, it was if we needed, if he had it.
Okay, well.
But that's been so far back though.
I'm dealing with what was reported to me, and I'm obligated to.
You never even asked for the credit card?
I can't remember that far back.
Because we were talking about calling into Middlebrooks to rent it.
Yeah, I know I called around, and Middlebrooks had one for a hundred and fifty, but they didn't have one stopped that day. So the only way I could have got one was to go to Panhandle or United Rentals down there. But that's been, that's been a while back.
But it was over five hundred?
Yeah, oh yeah. It had, yeah.
And I have never, ever, have or would I deny somebody a credit card?
Honestly, I got to say that, is, it's been at least two months ago. To me, as a council member, I wish it had been brought up then, if we'd had, had a special meeting.
What was it, May or June?
It is, it's, it's nothing against our, anybody, employees. I'm not picking Tracy out or picking Chad out, nobody.
I reported it to the attorney.
But when you do, when you do something like that, and I'm not saying if it was said that way, or it was a misunderstanding, the way it was worded, I don't know, but the thing is, that's two months ago, you know, and it's went on two months. And the thing is, if she did say that or didn't say that, she's got away with it for two months, and now we hit this point. We have a special meeting for anything else. We've been up here and been up here. As a council member, I'm speaking on my behalf, that's it. I wish I'd have known two months ago when this happened. Uh, I'm not picking on nobody, Chad and, or Jason. Just like Jason said, he don't remember exactly what was said. Two months ago, he would have, you know, if we'd have come, called a special. Now, I'm not saying nothing to Becky, but it was brought to your attention, and I, this is the first I've heard about it. You know, it makes me mad when we got an employee or somebody picking on one of our employees or a situation that's handled, because this is a serious situation. You come to the council and ask, and they should have the credit card. All our departments should have one for that reason, and I'm glad they do now, but we should have took care of it two months ago. And I'm, I'm glad it's out and open now. Uh, it's another learning process, I guess you can call it. But, uh, I hope Tracy didn't say that toward, you know, any of our employees or anybody, even though, because her husband's in that line of work. But if she donated a service, it's a totally different assumption or the person took it the wrong way, you know. And, uh, on my behalf, for Tracy, and I'll speak for her, I don't think she would put the city in a jeopardy like that. I don't think she would, but, you know, we all human, we all make mistakes, and sometimes it costs us, all of us, you know, as council members and employees. And, uh, but with that said, I just wish as a council member, it'd been brought, you know, to our attention before two months or whenever it was. You know, then we could have handled it, but then, now it's talking to public, uh, and I'm glad it is, but.
Well, and I, I was told that it had to be, so.
Yeah, I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
I have to call the special meetings, and I, I remember, now, I've been trying to think of, but I remember about it, but I think at the time, it was advised not to call a special meeting on it, because there was a lot of tensions, um, going on, and so I did not. So I, I have to take responsibility for there being no special meeting called on that.
Well, and, and, and I'll say, it's my responsibility as well, but I was also, um, basically told that we're aware of it. I'm aware of it, we need to, um, let things along. I mean, we already received, you know, the letters that we've already received, so that was another reason. But as, I'm obligated, and it's been on my heart. Yeah, it was reported, I told who I needed to tell at the time, but I'm obligated to let council know. I'm not saying anything of what was reported to me. Does anybody else have anything that they want to say on any of this?
Does Danny routinely donate? I mean, is he willing to donate?
He absolutely has.
Yeah, he has been during Hurricane Michael.
Absolutely, he donated about a full day.
So that's not out of the ordinary then?
During Hurricane Michael. That is, it's nothing out of the ordinary for me to offer his services if Jason needs it. But I never denied anyone the debit card or credit card, and, and I really, I want that on record, because that is just a flat-out lie, and I don't appreciate it. I think everyone up here knows me better than that, and that is, that's hurtful, that somebody would say that about me.
I think that we're dealing with miscommunication, and he said, she said, and he said, she said gets turned into, they definitely said this, or they definitely said that. And in my opinion, because I'm supposed to be kind of the middle person, if anybody has an issue, maybe they could bring it to me and let me, um, say, go to that person, and we go together and clear the air. Um, so that we don't have a he said, she said, and if they both think they're right, then they, we can talk about that together, if the council doesn't have a, an issue with that.
I, I certainly don't. That's been the whole thing with it, only the attorney that.
But we were advised that anything is supposed to come up here.
Anything, especially where the heads are concerned, is supposed to be, we have to bring it out at a meeting. We can't even, it's not even like it used to be when Joey would show up in the front office and write employee, that, we can't do that anymore. And even ask how that's done, we're accused of, you know, being against somebody. So I, that's why I just needed to put it out there, so it would be off my conscience, and I, I just reported what I was told.
Well, once again, I, I only dealt with Jason on that issue, period. No one else.
Then Jason must be the one who said it.
I didn't say it.
He didn't say it.
I mean.
I mean, if I said it, I'll say it.
That's just the way, I, I mean, that's the way I just heard what you just said, that you dealt with Jason. And then Jason.
Only person that I dealt with.
Would have to be the one that got sick.
Come on, man.
No. If anyone else said that, then the whole thing was fabricated.
While we're on the council, the president's report, I would like to add, um, we were all kind of awestruck. Am I allowed to do that since, on a special meeting? We were all kind of awestruck when we got the budget.
Yes.
Um, I have spoken with the accountant, and he has told me that Banyan made a really lot of mistakes, and they're the ones that set it up. Um, so I want that to be clarified, that the system we are using, either the people that set up the system don't have any idea what they're doing, or the system's crap, one or the other. Oh, that's a burning word. One or the other, but either way, uh, the, the accountant has contacted them directly. He has talked into a supervisor. They have gone over several aspects of the system. Not gonna say they're not gonna find more stuff down the road, but right now, we're on, at least know where we're at and what we've got to work towards. So we know we gotta work towards coming up with seventy thousand more dollars for the next budget, because we were thrown off from information from before. But I, I mean, I hung up the phone with the accountant just shortly before this meeting. So I did want to throw that out there and let all that just kind of.
Settle.
Settle and clear the air as far as the budget goes, because I did talk to him. I called him and wanted to clarify everything so that we would know exactly how all that was working. So he did verify, we talked for a while.
So does, does that, um, the system that we used, do they have some kind of insurance to back it up? Because now the city's in, in.
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand dollars in debt?
Well, not only that, a little bit more, because all those checks that we're having to sign right now are reimbursements to all the employees.
But, but the IRS, but the IRS is actually, uh.
Going to reimburse.
Lee, Lee sent in, Lee did all the nine forty-one adjustments, nine forty and nine forty-one adjustments this afternoon. Sent it to the IRS. They're gonna send us back double that amount, because see, you know, we have to match.
Yeah.
You have to match, so because of that, we're gonna get double that back. So it, it was actually a benefit for the city.
So it's not gonna affect our budget?
No, we're gonna have a little bit extra.
Okay.
But, but it actually hurt the employees, because they've been having too much taken out for, ever since that, yeah. So.
Yeah, so the check you're part of.
And I don't know how much a new system costs, but he, he was really shocked, because he said that he sat and just tried to figure out, you know, why is this not coming up? Because Tracy kept bringing it to his attention, and he could not. And finally, when he got them on the phone, they were, oh, no, it's fine, and he said, no, and he, till he got to a supervisor that went, oh, 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 no.
Well, and not, not only that, that was my issue when we were back, when we were discussing the issue with the meter earlier, is because the system that they upgraded from was RBS Mosaic, correct?
Yes.
That's the same system I worked under.
Yes.
And so I know that when you enter in a meter reading, there's an alert. And so my issue is, if we're having this kind of trouble with the new system, is it any better than the old?
I can tell you that with this system, whatever we can meter reads, it doesn't even take into account the stationary zeros when it's figuring whether it's high or low. So if I would change it, it wouldn't show.
And for Linda Wilson's, the reason it wouldn't alert is because it was set up wrong to start with, so it never knew it was incorrect. So it's not gonna send you an alert, because it thinks that's what it's supposed to be.
So what we done now, we went to every one, make sure every zero's right, so.
So it, it's a lot more work on them, it's a lot more work on us for this time, but it'll be perfect.
But we ready, every, meet everyone that have order in it, we can't read, we pumped out, or they pumped out, but.
Even Joey's.
Speaking of order, Jason.
Yeah, we know, already took care of it.
No, I would hope that it is the same thing.
What are you talking about, her house?
No, shallow.
I know, I got located, so. I got her house fixed.
Her house is fixed?
Yeah, air dry.
It's been fixed?
Yeah.
But shallow, it's fixed by, by the way today, it's not fixed.
All right.
But I got her, hers was, is done.
Thank you.
We done?
That's all I have, we can have a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Well, excuse me. I'd like, we would, we would like to ask the council a favor.
It's a special meeting.
Does it have to be voted on, because it's a special meeting, we're not allowed to?
We just want to put it out there, no?
Yeah, we can, yeah, just propose this to you, if you have to do this at a regular time, we understand. But first of all, we do respect the, um, the job of managing the city. We understand that's a challenge, and we've done our prayers and our support. But, uh, we, at a great assembly, Patrick, great assembly, and we've seen the need, uh, here in the city of a food bank. It's something that we've talked about as a church congregation for a period of time. And, um, really, we don't have room at our church, but more than that, we, we really, really wanted an offsite for a couple reasons. Wanted to be maybe more accessible to people, and second of all, uh, we realize that a food bank requires donations, and obviously, we'd be willing to help out, but perhaps another entity or another church or another individuals, or whoever would like to contribute. If it was at an offsite, for instance, here at the city hall, then it would be a community thing, because that's what we want to do, is help the community. You don't want to promote ourselves, just have a place where people can come for a food bank. And if there was room available here, at, at the, at the, here at the city hall, uh, we'd like to, um, use a room for a food bank that'd be accessible to the people here at Vernon. Maybe start off small, one day a week, a few hours one day a week, and, and feel it out, see if it grows, see the demand, and, and, and just go, go with that. But again, uh, the purpose is, uh, to help the people, and second of all, not promote ourselves, but a place where other churches or other groups could, would be willing to, um, donate to if they, if they desire. And again, this is an accessible place, this is where the business of the town takes place, and so, uh, people wouldn't feel like they're coming to our church that we have strings attached, we're gonna give them a, um, you know.
A bottle of beer?
Yeah, we don't know why, we're gonna hit a little bottle, or whatever, but, and just, um, we just think it would serve the community, so we want to propose that. If there was a room available, uh, we would like to, uh, to start on that. It takes probably some time to get it going, and it's something that we would could, uh, I'm not, I'm saying, again, we're not, we don't have the manpower to manage it every day, but, uh, again, this is the city where people are in and out, and who's traveled through here, where we could set it up a day, a few hours a day a week, and just see what happens.
We need a pretty big space.
Try not to start with, just one room. One room, yeah, and seats.
Right across the hall from me, right there at entrance, that building, that room is available?
Yes, because the floor sticks.
And the floor sticks now, the floor, finally.
That's a pretty big room there.
And that's it, I had to.
I don't have a dollar.
I'm happy that you joined me.
Yeah, I appreciate it, too. I ain't got, I didn't go for that place.
Just to work out the details, we're not allowed to vote on anything on a special meeting, not on the agenda, but obviously, the city would love to do that.
Are we gonna just have to work, um, today?
Yeah, we'll just have to do it officially Monday.
And then vote on the fifteenth.
We, we won't make a move before then anyway.
I'll hold food at my house if you want me to.
We have storage opportunities there.
She's got three children.
Yeah, teenagers, yeah, you know, there'd be no excess, right?
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
I just need to say to Jason.
Magic, thank you.
I make a motion with yours.
Thank you. All in favor? Me and John.